Actually like accountability and sort of my thing. And so I'm one of the few people in the state that actually follows this stuff really closely. And so what I wanted to do for you today is to get you to the point where you understand the basics of the new accountability system so that you can support your teachers through it, so that you can understand it when it's applied to your school division. Essentially, in the next couple of weeks, you're going to get your first designation and your schools are all going to get new designations. And this is going to help you understand what you're hearing. And so that's my goal today, to help you do your job. And it's, you're going to find that there's a lot going on behind the scenes. What you're seeing here is really about the culmination of four years of work at the governor's office. A lot of this is Governor Youngkin's vision put into, you know, really into action. And so, you know, that's why a lot of this is hitting right now, trying to get it in and done and wrapped up before he leaves office and, you know, trying to make that vision a reality. So let's talk about some changes. First off, Virginia used to have two accountability systems. We had a state accountability system that called accreditation, and then we had a federal accountability system that we mostly ignored. And at least for parts of our time. Now, federal accountability was big under the big AYP years, you know, about 15 years ago. But in terms of our two systems, we spent a lot more time on state accreditation. Is the school accredited? Is the school not accredited? And there's a new term that you're going to need to know. The term is bifurcation. And yep, yep, it's a cool word. I kind of like it, bifurcation. So bifurcation, what they're doing is this, they're splitting accountability from assessment. And so what that means is this, we're going to have school accreditation in Virginia, but school accreditation in Virginia is going to have nothing to do with the SOLs. Okay? So whether your school is accredited or not is going to be based on you, the school board. It's going to be based on the inputs. And when I say based on the inputs, that is going to be, do you meet the SOQs? And I'm sure you've heard that term before, the SOQs. You know, you have to have X number of librarians, X number of counselors, whatever, those sort of things. If you're meeting the SOQs, you will essentially be accredited. All right? So that's going to be the relatively easy bar, just meet the regs. Okay? So now, the other bar is going to be the assessment side of things. Now, on the assessment side of things, rather than look at the inputs to education, it's going to look at the outputs. That's going to be the result, you know, of all of our work. And so that's the assessment side. That's what we're going to be talking about mostly today. But so basically, the bifurcation has happened and we're splitting those two. Now, while they were creating this new system, they put out really clear guidelines for essentially what they were trying to do, the state board and the governor. First, high expectations for each student. You may have seen some articles related to NAEP. NAEP is what they call the nation's report card. And during the COVID years, Virginia slipped considerably on the NAEP report card as a whole, as a state. We don't get division level or school level data on the NAEP. We have no clue how your division did or our division did on NAEP. But we know that the division slipped during COVID, the state slipped during COVID. And so one of the goals was to improve our standing in NAEP and to essentially align the Virginia SOLs and our passing rates with NAEP. So essentially, you know, the results that we get on SOLs should mirror the results we get on NAEP. That's one of the goals there, though, with the hope that that would raise student achievement. So that's one thing that relates to those high expectations. Governor Youngkin made a promise. He said, "We're going to have the toughest cut scores in the nation." And when we get towards the end of our presentation, you'll see sort of, you know, where we're going with that. The next transparency and access to actionable information, again, wants it to be really obvious to parents how the school is doing and relatively simple to parents. There was a lot of talk at the beginning about like an A to F system for schools, and they eventually didn't go with an A to F system, and I'll show you, you know, what system they came up with. Student academic growth and proficiency are big, but we want every student to pass. We don't want to just say, "Well, they failed, but they got better." You know, they want to make sure that students are meeting levels of proficiency. And, you know, building trust and transparency, getting stakeholder input, some additional considerations, meaningful differentiation. They pointed out right at the beginning of this process that about 90% of the schools in the state of Virginia were accredited. Well, if 90% of the schools in the state of Virginia are accredited, how do you know which ones are the good ones and which ones aren't? How do you know where to send your child, where not to send your child? So that's one of the things that they wanted to fix. They wanted to differentiate schools to a greater degree. We talked about bifurcation. We have a federal and a state accountability system that is going to be merged into one system. Now, I bet you that most of you know the answer to this. When you merge state and federal, whose rules win?
More stringent.
The federal, more stringent rules, yes. So basically, Virginia, a lot of rules that Virginia had around testing go away and the federal rules take precedence. And they wanted to close that honesty gap related to NAEP. They felt like the cut scores in particular in Virginia were so low that it made it, that we were telling parents, "Parents, you know, your child's proficient, they're doing great." But NAEP was saying, "No, your child's not proficient." And they felt like the gap between that was what was called the honesty gap. So they wanted to close that. All right, now, let's talk homers. Now, in terms of our new school ratings for accountability, yeah, I wanted to put a face with the name. We have distinguished. Those would be our top schools. You have to get 90 points out of 100. On track, 80 to 89 points. Off track, 65 to 79 points. And if you get below 69 points in the system, your poor, poor sick homer who needs intensive support. Now, this was incredibly, behind the scenes, this was the biggest battle of the whole thing. Okay? And you might have figured out what the battle was. The wording of one of these really drove people nuts, and it's the off-track wording. There were a lot of superintendents who said, "I'd rather my school need intensive support than be called off-track." Because, you know, you talk to a principal and say, "Do you need intensive support?" The principal says, "Heck, yeah, bring me some intensive support." Whereas if you say, "Are you off-track?", that's directional. And when you say, when you say something that's directional, then that implies that you're not, I mean, you're not doing your job very well. And so there were a lot of concerns among educators that the off-track wording, because it's directional, you know, could be misleading. In fact, you could actually be improving for lots of years in a row, but if you don't hit that 79, you know, above 79 points, you're still going to be called off-track. So there was a concern there that it could be misleading. They ended up sticking with the off-track. And that was again, the recommendation of the state superintendent's groups and all sorts of groups like that. But it is what it is. So that's what we've got. The other, one thing I will tell you is this, the biggest concern I personally had about this, and I've thought a lot about this, is that, let's say you're a parent of a prospective kindergartner. If you're the parent of a prospective kindergartner that could go to your school, but they could also homeschool, they could also maybe go somewhere else, you know, parents more and more are changing and, you know, doing things that are beyond, outside of the public school realm. We want them to go to the public schools because we feel like we're doing a good job and that we feel like this is a good, safe place for kids. And if we believe that, if we feel that, you know, we want to get those folks here and, you know, and show them what we're all about. The concern is that someone sees that off-track moniker for a school and without knowing anything about the school, you know, a lot of our parents don't know anything about these schools, without knowing anything about these schools says, "I would feel terrible sending my child to a school that's labeled off-track. Am I a bad parent for sending my kid to an off-track school?" And that's, that's something that we've struggled with around the state as to, you know, what's the messaging for parents? You know, what should we be, you know, should we reach out to them and do a little parent support there or just handle it on a case-by-case basis? I'm not sure there's a right answer or a wrong answer there. But growth basically deals with, how did I do last year on the SOL versus this year on the SOL? But it's, it's a little more complex than that. Now, at high school, we've got the four-year graduation rate. That's the FGI, which essentially only measures standard and advanced studies diplomas. Any other diploma? No. GEDs, no. Dropouts, no. You know, it's really just, did you get a standard or higher? And that's, that's it. What's the percentage? And that's 15%, but if you're running like you are, in the 90s, you're getting like, let's say 94% of 15 points, you're getting almost all your points there. So your graduation rate's excellent.
That's chronic absenteeism.
Chronic absenteeism, we used to talk about a lot because it was a big part of the old system. In this system, it's not a big part at all, actually. This system, it's baked in that you're going to lose about half a point, and that's about it. The chronic absenteeism is also at the middle, but they have something called advanced coursework, we'll talk about that. But at high school, this is where the readiness gets really big. This is, are you ready for life? Are you ready for a career in the private sector? Are you ready for the military? Are you ready for college? That's what they're going to be looking at.
Special ed kids, how does this affect them?
All right. So for students with disabilities, essentially the way it works is that the old system used to break it out and say, "You have to hit a certain pass rate." And that pass rate would go up pretty much each year, or at least it used to. Then it was at 70 for math, 75 for reading. But essentially now, the way, the way it works, and this is going to sound kind of crazy, the groups are not reported as part of the main plan. You'll notice, you didn't see any reporting groups in that first slide that shows you the breakdown. The way it works is this, is that they're going to take, okay, so one of the things they do in accountability is they look at the bottom 5% of Title I schools. Title I schools are the schools with highest poverty in the state. They take the bottom 5% of the Title I schools, and then they say, "Okay, who's the best of the worst? Who's the best Title I school of the bottom 5%?" And they look at that school's proficiency rates, that their pass rates essentially. And the schools, they use that pass rate from that one school
As the benchmark.
As the benchmark that you have to meet in our subgroups, in our special ed subgroups, in our L subgroups, in our disadvantaged subgroups. They use that pass rate, and you have to meet that pass rate. Now, the trick for school divisions is this, even today, in September, we don't know who that school is. Okay? We don't know who that school is. We don't know what the number is, even though they tested in spring. And so you can't predict what that number will be. It's a changing value every year because it's a new school potentially every year. But they have to meet that. Now, if you don't meet that, that number, then what ends up happening is you have to drop one proficiency level down. So if the school was on track, the school is now off-track. So it's a pretty steep drop, but it's, to be honest with you, I don't want to say we're blessed by some divisions that pull some low numbers because that's an awful thing to say. But honestly, most of the time, we're pretty, pretty safe. Most of the time, we're pretty safe. So there's some schools out on the eastern side of the state that pull some low numbers. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to name names, but you can look it up. Where we could lose sleep are things that the state board's talking about right now, where they're talking about adding world geography into eighth grade and where they're talking about, and making that part of advanced coursework for middle school. There's even some talk about moving a science down from high school down there and making basically eighth grade like an early high school experience. So if, if that were to come to fruition, that would move a lot of cheese and it would have pretty significant repercussions for teacher licensure, and we'd have to probably move some teachers, you know, between schools, things like that. I don't think we're there right now, but it's, it's been on the table, especially the social studies move. The social studies move isn't the one that stresses me out as much as the, as the science. If they were to mess with science, that would really change a lot.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Sure.
Why?
So the way social studies works is that most of our
No, why any of that, pushing it down to the eighth grade?
Okay, so the idea that the percentage of students taking advanced coursework, yeah, basically they want more kids challenging themselves, and it would also allow students to get verified credits early, which are high school credits early. I'm not sure that for your average kid, that's necessary or appropriate. In fact, if you were to ask my superintendent, he'd say it's not developmentally sound. And, and so there's, there are pros and cons to this, but the prevailing wind right now nationally is to say, "This school is better if they're pushing more kids to higher level coursework." And that's essentially what they're, what they're trying to represent here. I think there's some flaws in how they want to represent it, but if we stick with the way it is right now, the way it'll be when you hear about it in the next few weeks, with Algebra I, I think they're pretty sound. I think they're okay for, for right now where they are. They just need to stay where they are. That's the key. Points. For a child who's going into the work world directly, they'll have to get a high-demand certification. Okay? So it won't be, you know, one of those CTE certifications they have to get just to graduate. It'll be like a, you know, ASC mechanic certification or something like that. They'll have to get a real, you know, some sort of certification that gets them a good job. And they're going to have a list of that. The list is still changing a little bit, but there'll be a list. In terms of, and by the way, you get fewer points if you've got a credential that's a little bit lower. So, and you can get partial points. By the way, a child can get points in all three of these. So a single kid could get even, a single kid could get three points. Enlistment, if you're going to go into the military, if you would get a 31 on the ASVAB or higher, you get points. 31 gets you partial points, but getting a 65 where you can go into like military intelligence or fixed fighter planes, that'll get you a full point. So here's some good, good jobs going that, that route. So that sounds really good, and I like it a lot. The only problem we've got with, with ASVAB is that, you might have heard of like DOGE. They are cutting the, the DOE's testing budget, like a huge amount. And there's literally one guy and a couple helpers that test the whole state, and now the entire state wants to test all their kids, and they can't keep up with demand. It's, it's, so we're having a hard time getting the tests now.
That's great.
In fact, they, they give you the bonus for getting an associate's degree. Now, it's, it's tricky to get an associate's degree, but, you know, and not every division even offers that as an option, but, but it is, it is the only way to get the bonus.
Do they have a standard for all these things that they've set up? Or what the curriculum will look like, what you have to teach for them to pass that class?
Good point. So for the AP, there's national AP curricula that you can pull from the college board site. That's, that's been standardized for a long, long time. It's basically college professors that come together to work on that curriculum. Whereas on the dual enrollment side, the teacher basically sets the curriculum, usually they follow the SOL curriculum and go beyond the SOLs, but the teacher has to submit a syllabus to the department chair at the community college. And the department chair at the community college has to say, "This is college level," or "No, this is college level, go back and show me some college level." So, so there is, there is a bar to meet to make sure that this is college-level work. Yes. All right. We talked about this already. You were, you were ahead of the game on that. Now, let's say that your school division does not, let's say you're off-track. Or maybe you were, you needed a whole lot of support and you were a homer on life support. Then if that's the case, you could be a targeted support and improvement school. That's if you have underperforming subgroups or additional target performing, then you're basically stuck in it for three years where you get state support. When we talk about state support, the levels of state support essentially work like this. If you aren't going to be on track, you're probably going to have to do a whole lot of independent paperwork and reporting to the state. And there's not going to be a whole lot of back and forth, but if you're one of these schools that is, you know, that needs significant support, then you're going to, you're going to have somebody from DOE essentially attached to your school division, and they're going to work side by side with you on school improvement, essentially. In the past, you always had to hit 400 to pass. Okay? Well, first off, these, you'll notice that some of these numbers are higher than 400 to pass. They're pretty much all higher than 400 to pass. So let's say that in the past, and you can pretty much use 400, in the past, you had to hit 400 for proficiency. But now, Algebra I, 453 for proficiency. Okay? Now, you might think, "Okay, 453, what does that mean?" Well, if 400's passing, 500's pass advanced, 600's perfect, okay? You're about halfway on the normal year, about halfway, you're kind of in the middle. You're an average sort of score. C+, B-, sort of kid, yeah. So, so yeah, 453. However, we were able to take the, these, these cut scores and overlay them on last year's results. I had a high school who, in Algebra I, last year was at 87% passing. Okay? If we took this cut score at 453, that high school at 87% was at 29% passing. Okay? Now, you might be like, "Why 29? I mean, did all your kids barely pass last year?" Algebra I in ninth grade, remember we were talking about Algebra I, most, we want our kids to take it early? Over half our kids take Algebra I in, in seventh or eighth grade. So if over half of them take it in seventh grade, the ones left over in ninth grade are not your top kids. Okay? They're the ones who get 420 in early, "Tchajee!", you know? We're happy. So essentially, that's what we're looking at here. This becomes a graduation issue. And for example, ESE reading, that's the highest number of the bunch, 479. So it used to be 400, now it's almost equivalent to a pass advanced, pass it for this spring. Okay? That's this spring. Now, this is not, this is not part of the accreditation system that's going to get released, you know, in the next week or two, but this is what's coming next. Now, this'll, this'll float into the, the accountability system, though, for the year after and the year after and the year after. So remember I said, you know, I've got schools in the bonus getting bonus points for SOLs? Well, that's probably going to be a thing of the past if they come anywhere close to these cut scores. So if anything like these cut scores gets approved by the state board, typically what you're going to see are drops of about 30 percentage points, 25, 30 percentage points on average across the state in terms of pass rates. That means if you had a 90% pass rate, you can now look forward to a 60% pass rate. Okay? Now, I told you earlier that part of your job as a school board member is going to be understanding this. This is one of the key things I wanted you to understand here, is that if this gets enacted, everything changes. The whole dynamics of, of testing, of getting kids ready for the assessments, all the dynamics change. So
So we lowered the pass rates
You're getting this for kindergarten ones?
You're right. You're right. At COVID, they did lower them.
So I guess my point is, do we, if we're, if someone came and presented the fact that, "Hey, we might lower the test score, should we jump up in there with joy?"
So, no, I think, I think actually this score's needed to be raised. What happened here is this, the state lowered the cut scores, let's say by one step, but they raised them by about four. So
So 433 and 436 is
So I would say that if you were to put this 453 back to where it probably should be, it's probably more like 413, something like that. So, so that's really what you're, you're getting here. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, okay? And I want to be real clear about that. This is a, this is nothing but a judgment to meet the proficiency rates that the nation has with NAEP. And to basically say, if a kid's going to be proficient on NAEP, they should be proficient on the SOLs and vice versa. Okay? So that a parent doesn't hear, "Well, Virginia kids are all failing the national test," when they're seeing passes come home. Okay? They're trying to reconcile that. So, so again, that's all personal opinion as to whether that's, you know, something you value, something you don't value, whether you value the NAEP that much. That is complete personal opinion, and there are, there is, there's plenty of people on both sides that we tell are failures, that in the past, we were, were saying, "You're successful." Now, there's a lot of people who would say, "You were sugarcoating it before, and you shouldn't have been sugarcoating it." And, you know, the other thing about that is that, you know, my, my, if I had to go into my, my personal world here, I would say, "I'd rather sugarcoat it than, than change their concept of who they are." Because if you're told for years and years that you're a failure over and over again, that's going to change your trajectory, in my opinion.
Let me, let me ask a weird question. Most questions are asked by weird. I don't disagree with doing this, but I don't agree with doing it 12 months. I think you have a plan laid out to give the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders a chance to slide out of the system and the other slot to slide into the system you want to build. But if you're just to throw them in the deep end, not even with an inner tube or anything, it's kind of suicidal, isn't it?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of folks who said, you know, "If you want to go about this, the best way to do it, rather than jumping in the deep end, is incrementally raise the numbers over the course of maybe a decade." And, and that's probably, if I were to make a recommendation, how I would go. But, you know, and there are, of course, you could also say, "Okay, I've got Johnny over here, he's a gifted kid. He, we don't even need to test Johnny. He tested so far." There's plenty of things that you could say about how to do it, but
So don't test Johnny, but give the rest of them a break. I mean, I think we've got to become creative in dealing with this. I don't know if this is going to make education better or worse, because right now, I think you've got to, you've got to kind of pacify the teachers a little bit. This is going to become a nightmare for teachers.
So that's a good point. So I am the same way. I don't know if it'll make it better or worse, but I will give you an example. I can give you an example of Tennessee. Tennessee did this about 13 years ago, and Tennessee had the same thing. They saw really low NAEP scores, and this was well pre, this was pre-COVID. They, they had low NAEP scores, they went to significantly higher cut scores, and what they did is they had pass rates drop considerably, similar to what we're looking at. And then their pass rates went up a little bit to where now your normal school is seeing pass rates of like 55%. Okay? Now, not great, but that's about where they've sort of, you know, stayed. But their NAEP rankings have gone up considerably. So you could argue that the student's proficiency has gone up because of that, but again, on their, their state tests, they're, you know, only about half are showing proficiency. Now, what they don't have, and this is where I'm really worried, what they don't have are verified credits. Now, verified credits, to remind you, a, a high school student has to pass five SOLs, and they're certain SOLs, they have to pass five SOLs to graduate. Okay? So if you overlay this system with the system of verified credits, you run into graduation problems. Now, the state board has said that they're going to come up with some way to essentially waive this for this year's seniors. Now, they're going to have to come up with, probably in conjunction with the general assembly, they're going to have to come up with a plan for what to do about verified credits. Because long-term, this isn't, this is not a, you're going to have parents with pitchforks and whose kids aren't graduating. No politician will survive that. So they will come up with something to deal with verified credits. I don't know what that is. Now, one thing I do know is that there is a bill that might give us a hint. It's probably HB 1957, it was passed last, in the last general assembly session. And this bill did this, changes the SOL scoring next year, not this year, to a 100-point system. It'll just look like a test grade. The other thing it does, it's going to make the SOL score be 10 The other thing it does, it's going to make the SOL score be 10% of a student's final grade in the course. Now, so they're skinning the game a little bit there. Now, what they could do, and this would be the wise way to go, the wise way to go would say, "Okay, by making it part of the student's grade, what I've done is I've made it part of their graduation experience. Therefore, I don't need verified credits." Because otherwise, it's kind of like double jeopardy. So that would be the wise way to go. I wouldn't be surprised if that's what they come up with, but in today's political environment, you know, I couldn't make you promises one way or the other. You probably know this more than most people, but sometimes teachers miss considerable amounts during the year. Okay? So if my child is randomly assigned to teacher A, and teacher A is out on leave for two or three months, and I get a, you know, a warm body to fill, which frankly, sometimes happens, then my kid, actually, their grade in the course is going to be hurt by that. The other situation that you could potentially run into is you've got two teachers teaching the same thing. Teacher A is brand-new, fresh out of college. Teacher B is a veteran rock star. Okay? Your kid gets assigned to teacher A, they get a higher score, they get a better grade in the course than if your kid gets randomly assigned to teacher B. Now, you could say, "Well, they didn't learn as much. They should get a lower grade." But was that their fault? So, you know, there's going to be some, I think there's going to be some back and forth on some of this. All right. So I do make the prediction that high-stakes testing is going to really make a resurgence because with these pass rates, if we're seeing pass rates 30 down, we're going to have to focus a lot more on the test. Because right now, and you notice the focus on pass advanced rates, where the 600 kids still have to get 600? It used to be in the old system that if you were passing, you know, it's not that I wasn't worried about you, but I could, you know, if I had a class full of kids that were going to rock the test, I could go and do a lot of cool stuff that maybe I wouldn't have done otherwise. Right now, I've got to drill the content. Not that that's terrible, and there's good ways to do it, and a good teacher can do it in a fun way. Okay? So that's really important. And how Kim prepares for teachers, that's a really important piece. And making the students' experience fun while you do all this, that's key. But in the end, what they end up teaching will be informed by this. That's what we're going to have to do. It's going to take a lot of work, and some of the teachers are going to need loving. They're going to need some, they're going to need some hugs, especially in the spring if these cut scores get passed. They're going to need some hugs, they're going to need some loving, they're going to need maybe some lunch sent over. You know, I'm just giving you some ideas. But, you know, they're going to maybe need a barbecue. I don't know. But the point of the matter is, they're going to need to know that you know, and that you care, and that you understand. And if you can show them that, that will, I think that'll go a long way. To the retention piece, to them understanding that we're all in this together, I would ask you to consider that sort of thing at the end of the year. If this is the final resting place, and it stays like this, set in stone and concrete for the next 10 years, that's probably not a good place for it to be. I do think, though, that you're going to see a lot of change over the next two years. A lot. Meaning that people's heads are going to be spinning, there's so much change. And it's going to be hard. And the adults in the room are going to be confused half the time because the goalposts are always changing. And so that's, that's what keeps people like me in my house. I mean, believe me, a good stroke of my time is just managing all of that and trying to figure it all out and make sense of it, and so that we, one, are in compliance with the law, but, two, educationally know what we need to do to pivot, to do what's right by kids. And we pivot a lot.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for coming today.
Yeah, very
Spending your time with us.
Yes.
We really appreciate it.
I'm right down the road and a phone call away, so if there's ever any questions, you know, work with Kim. Kim's got my cell phone number, and I'm absolutely happy to assist you in any way.